Can you just wrap it up and take off, turn off everything, turn the lights off? I'll wait around for you.
I'm okay if you leave, it's just, uh, I don't mind closing City Hall. Yeah, we go out the door and then we don't hang around.
Okay, so then after the regular, just three L leave, you'll turn this thing off?
No, no.
Shut all of that.
Okay.
And they did a sound check.
And they did a sound check. It's kind of disappointing, I think he deserved as much as a bomb. Deep control of the series from this part.
How you doing?
For the flock cameras. We're gonna get some full block that's, I know you're gonna opt out. Make sure that it puts up to that is.
Okay.
And, uh, and I'm actually, I'm questioning myself now about the retention. I was clearly told, but I thought that they did all the law requirements and retention things. And now we can talk to my sheriff's department, but they're not so sure. Unfortunately, don't think that I'm really a straight, unbiased.
And that if they do, that seems to match the.
Sheriff's Department. So, it was the sheriff's department. We haven't made it to its colleagues. There's three or four guys that, three guys, that, that probably, like, basically managed that stuff and took care of the equipment and all that stuff.
I keep looking, was this really your, your, who you gonna call?
Pretty, pretty.
You gonna bring a mic to the Tony?
Mostly like. So, one of the guys just left the in-house original. They're just the complete, huge company. So, they're bringing things about. It was period or something. It's locked in, seemed to be.
Yeah, it's the thing that I was. Okay, well, it's good to investigate that. But otherwise, we'd be the plan to be. Okay, thanks for the update.
I don't know, maybe got a master pedicure, put it back in the rafter's or something. Fingers? Yeah. I know you had to give ratters two picks.
Good evening, the San Dimas City Council and Housing Authority meeting will, will start pursuant to the Governor's order dated March 17th, 2020. The City Council is authorized to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make meetings accessible electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address this legislative body. All Brown Act provisions that require the physical presence of city councilmen and public city and/or the public for city council meetings are waived. Please rise for the pleasure allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just for the record, all five city councilmen are present in the chambers. Okay, we'll go to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from taking and engaging in discussions on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to a staff or set for discussion at a later date. If you desire to address the city council on any, on an item on the agenda other than the scheduled public hearings, you may do so at this time or ask to be heard when the agenda item is being considered. Comments on public hearings items will be considered when that item is scheduled for discussion. The public comment section is 30 minutes. Each shall be, each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. At the end of your three minutes, the city manager will make a comment about that your three minutes are up and he will disconnect the call. Okay? If you have any comments, feel free to call us.
Thank you for calling, your three minutes starts now.
Good evening, this is Ariandrea, the Verdi Ridge Homeowners Association. Wanted to mention how disappointed I am that you didn't go ahead and have your study session. I understand what you had to say, but at the same token, all the council members were there, all the planning commission members were there, our board of directors was there waiting to discuss with you. Um, Councilman Vienna has made a comment during that meeting that I have to respectfully disagree with. Uh, we, that the city is trying to undermine the homeowners association. Uh, Kate, just one question that I have is, why is the city council looking at four different options for Area 1 Ridge when it was never presented to the homeowners association? One item that happened was 22nd sent out a letter to all, the home lot owner about hearings and about the stuff and the homeowners association itself and me personally did not get a letter from the city. Did not find out about, about four or five weeks ago. Another question is, why are you looking at, why are you even looking at it when you know the homeowners association has more grading rules which would provide anything that might come up with? Um, your action shows a total disrespect to all associations. City has mandated that we follow this standard and S P that you established and you already. Thank you.
Brad, will you contact Gary tomorrow and tell him that we couldn't understand basically anything that he said? I, I mean, unless somebody else does, I couldn't understand. That's what the problem is, every other word we're hearing and half of it. So, tell him we appreciate his conversation, but I don't think anybody up here really truly under, you know, there's just a lot of comments, you know? I think I got the zist of it, but I didn't really under, uh, communicate.
Yes, Mayor, we'll call tomorrow.
Thank you. Apologize for the poor.
We've got five more, give us one minute. Thank you for calling, your three minutes starts now.
Uh, yes, uh, my name is Robert Crata, R A T A, and I'm with my wife Christine Crata. And we are residents in San Dimas, live at 1556 Caillouina. And we have been, uh, members of the community since 2004, living at that residence. And we are calling in support of removing 200 yard restriction. It has impacted our community having that restriction because there's a lot of lot development. Has created an ISO on certain lots. And on top of it, it has impacted ourselves because a number of years ago, we wanted to put the basketball court and do some remodeling at our house because our kids were young enough to play. And we could not get approval because of that restriction. Because of that restriction, we have a basketball on the driveway and the ball runs out the street. Instead, we wanted to put a court in the backyard, uh, but the city, but, but the city would not allow it. So, we, we live on approximately four acres here in San Dimas and a restriction of 200 cubic yards doesn't make, uh, because it's not proportionate to the land and surrounding. And it doesn't seem that it serves people at all because it's not based on any engineering or any other fee. To, to the tract homes that are on, you know, one tenth of our size and they can move as much land as they want, um, to move 200 cubic feet, which small portions are 4.5 acres of land. So, it doesn't, it, there's no logic to that. And so what we're asking, a removal of the restriction so that our city can improve, develop and grow all the entities. This is something that our lives, there's certain, when you have, there's certain, when you make these restrictions or when these restrictions apply, that people will abate, like, and not challenge them like we did and simply not develop. And as time progresses, our kids grow up, we never had the opportunity of having the basketball court in the development of our backyard, all our restriction soil that couldn't move.
Excuse me, sir, your three minutes are up. Thank you for your call. Thank you for calling, your three minutes is, is.
Um, is it, uh?
Go ahead.
Yes, am I on?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Leo Wills and I am at 1580 Caillou Christina, uh, in San Dimas. And I'm calling in support of, of removing the restrictions for the 200 cubic yards that are allowed by the Development Plan Review Board. Um, and I would also contend that the homeowners association's objection has been filed without real knowledge or real consent from the Caillou Christina community for which these restrictions apply. Because these are, the homeowner association, uh, speaking for us, you know, and our homes here on Caillou Christina are in a minority of the association. But our street is the street that mostly affected, you know, by this ordinance or this, or this restriction. And I tell you, just talking to many of my neighbors, we are not in favor of this restriction.
Oh, okay.
And I agree with my other neighbor that was previous, that this restriction has caused an ISO for years in our neighborhood. Undeveloped properties and people not being interested in developing these properties because of these types of restrictions. And it's hurt the value of our, our neighborhood, it's hurt the aesthetic beauty of our neighborhood. And I think it should be removed.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for calling, your three minutes starts now.
Uh, my name is Ronald Lescanich and I live at 1574 Cali Christina, uh, in San Dimas, Villa Verde. Um, I built a custom home up here in Villa Verde, um, about 18 years ago. And I have a concern regarding the amount of earth that could be moved. I believe in my case, it was, uh, 400 feet. And if you look at homes that have been built recently here, uh, they can't because, you know, there aren't any flat lots. So, all of these homes that are being built are built on a, like, on a ledge. And it's next to impossible to get an architect to be able to get something where you're locking the home in, perhaps have a flat area and even have a pool, uh, because you can only move 400 cubic feet. So, when I built my house, this was my problem and it cost a lot more money in engineering, uh, in order to do that. And at the time when my house was built, the excess dirt I couldn't use, uh, because, uh, I, I was not allowed to move more than 400. But at the same time, the city of San Dimas allowed my dirt to be moved to property to the left of me because he had a problem with erosion. Well, guess what? About four years ago, I had a problem with erosion and I had to build walls on my hill to prevent my backyard from sliding. And if I would have allowed, been allowed to keep my own dirt, I wouldn't have had to spend an extra $150,000 in order to do that. So, you know, I really think we're not building on flat lots here and there's no houses being built. In fact, the custom homes on the other side of Villa Verde are, uh, at a much higher value than ours because they can build homes over there. Where we're at, we can't because of this limitation. And I believe that we're the only association where this ridiculous thing comes up. So, you know, be considered of other people's minds to build. Our values are going down because nobody can build around here. That's why our houses haven't gone up. And, uh, I just think something should be done in allowing more movement of earth, just like it is everywhere else in San Dimas. It should be just right there and equal.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for calling, your three minutes starts now.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, this is Isabel Ebner. I'm calling because I am disappointed that the study session before the council meeting was pretty much fully adjourned. I do believe many folks in the community were prepared to listen and discuss the S P grading changes, as you've noticed from the first few callers today. Mr. Vienna alluded to a media source that seems to be spreading, quote, misinformation about the Villa Verde grading issue. I think it's safe to assume he's speaking about my podcast, Isabel in San Dimas. Nowhere in my podcast did I express a particular position on this matter. I reported on my thorough research on the topic to bring transparency and make sure my neighbors were informed about what I believe is an important topic. I watched past council meetings, reviewed the agenda packet and spoke with members of the HOA affected. I was balanced and I called Councilmember Weber, who declined to comment on the record for my episode. Regarding the widespread implications mentioned in my podcast, those ideas came from and were properly attributed to the HOA board members that I talked to and appeared in the attorney's letter. So, if anyone listening would like to learn more about this issue of increasing the grading limits in the specific part of Villa Verde, check out my podcast at isabelinsandimas.com/grading. And if you'd like to do your own research, watch the council meetings from July 14th, September 22nd, as well as read the agenda packet from tonight's study session, which includes a particularly illuminating letter from the attorney of the Villa Verde Ridge HOA. All the links can be easily found on my website at isabelinsandimas.com/grading. Lastly, I'm working on an upcoming Halloween episode, so if anyone in town has a good San Dimas ghost story, please feel free to reach out to me at isabelinsandimas@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling, your three minutes starts now.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Council, my name is Chris Wirick. I am a board member of the San Dimas.
I am a board member of the San Dimas Johnstone Station HOA. Uh, first, I would like to thank the, uh, the mayor for his comments earlier. Uh, I understand that the community was willing and wanting to comment on this particular issue at that time, but I, I personally appreciated the, uh, spirit of collaboration and, uh, focusing with, uh, the, the various constituencies, uh, to make sure that all voices were heard. So I, I, I just wanted to commend you for that, sir, and thank you. Um, and I also wanted to thank the council members for their service. Uh, and Mr. Vienna, I, I wanted to mention to you specifically, I've, I've watched a handful of your videos online. I appreciate, uh, your, your viewpoints and, uh, sharing information with the community in the way that you do. Uh, I think that that is certainly a, a service that is welcome and, and a nice piece of information for the residents to have. Um, I personally watched the 714 meeting, and I, I did want to, uh, ask Mr. Vienna to clarify just a couple of comments that I heard from the planning session earlier, if, if you could please, sir. Uh, one of the things that you had mentioned, uh, was that you would support the measure regardless, and I, I wasn't sure if that was a support of the, the measure to adjourn the meeting, or if that was a support of this particular measure, not having heard some of the, uh, issues that had come up, or that, that, uh, Mr. Bader had mentioned, uh, pertaining to having more involvement from the community. Um, I also appreciate the, the residents, uh, as part of the HOA that called in in opposition to this ruling. Um, my particular stance is not one that I have a, a dog in the fight, one way or another pertaining to the, to the grading. Um, but as an HOA board member, I, I would, uh, have liked to see more involvement or input from the, uh, council, as well as, uh, the Planning Commission pertaining to the HOA, and it didn't seem like that dialogue had been necessarily occurring in the videos that I watched. I did get my information, uh, or it was brought to this source, uh, by Isabel's podcast, but I would, uh, stress especially to, uh, Mr. Vienna, that, that I did my own research, I felt like from that podcast as well, uh, and, and I felt like it was a, a, a pretty unbiased, uh, at least lead for information. Um, so I, I kind of would caution, uh, at least that, uh, naysaying against that avenue of information for the citizens of San Dimas because it is a nice way to get some info. Um, and it's part of the reason why I actually voted for you, uh, Mr. Weber. Um, so I wanted to just stress my concern about, and maybe offer an olive branch to the city council pertaining to, uh, engaging in planning discussions of these types of, in these future instances. Uh, I would suggest to the city that they be more overt about involving the HOA and, uh, and incorporating dialogue.
Thank you for your call. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, your three minutes starts now.
I find it, I'm sorry, I find it very concerning that a council member is badgering, harassing, and trying to publicly embarrass another council member into using less personal protective equipment during your city council meetings during a pandemic. According to the state and county guidelines, you shouldn't even be holding these meetings in person to begin with. All of the reasons brought up by one councilman for using less PPE, the bothersome reflection of plexiglass, the fact that someone could cough or touch something by accident, could all be solved by holding Zoom meetings. Some councilmembers are irresponsible towards COVID pandemic as leaders in this community. Your personal interpretation or opinion of this virus does not give you the authority to disregard state and county guidelines. In fact, local government is supposed to be stricter, not less strict, in enforcing these guidelines. The mindset of not following the public health order because, well, I have a government, is not the right mentality to lead this community safely through the pandemic. Historically, San Dimas City Council has been a group of council members with decorum and respect, and even in disagreement has kept civil discourse. Now, city council meetings have turned into a spectacle with bullying behavior, and the city's citizens and legislative advocacy will suffer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for calling, your three minutes starts now.
Good evening, San Dimas City Council and neighbors. Uh, my name is Catherine Begin, and I am a resident of an Area 1 of the Villa Verde area. I've been, like I said, I've been here for 31 years in San Dimas and been in this area for seven. Uh, my neighbors and I, many of them will be calling in as well as emailing, are very much in support of Option 2, the grading issue, and we would like, um, some flexibility needed up here, as each lot is very unique, and we are requesting to have the option to grade. We love our neighbors, we'd love to have more, there are many, many empty lots up here. Also, I'd like to address the issue of a podcast that, a propaganda that's not correct to sending misleading information to my fellow neighbors and community. Um, and Isabel Ebner, uh, posted a podcast regarding zoning issue changes with an incorrect title, um, possibly for fear and to have opposition on my neighborhood. Um, I would like that corrected if that's possible. Tonight's issue is on a grading issue, it's not on a zoning issue, and it's being spread throughout the community. Um, any neighbors that are willing to come up to Area 1? Come find me, come see me, I'll meet you, I'll show you around. Um, let's enjoy our passion and our hillsides together. Um, we all are one here, and like I said, I've been here 31 years, our family's been here for 50. Um, we have businesses here, we, we support businesses here, um, and we have residences here. So I want to get along and, um, show people around. Come see Area 1, and let us show you what we're talking about. Thank you, we support Option 2.
Thank you. Brad, how long are we going to do this? Thank you for calling, your three minutes starts now.
Good evening, Mayor Bader and City Councilmembers. This is Ms. Hugrumer, and I'm calling with, um, with regards to a new, very neat opportunity that we have in our cities to help one of our own. As you may recall, at the last city council meeting, a 17-year-old young lady called to share her story of her father, a San Dimas nurse, who left her and her two siblings orphaned after contracting COVID-19 while caring for coronavirus patients. We were all touched, and many were left wondering what they could do to help. A group of concerned San Dimas residents have come together to raise money to help this family stay in their San Dimas home. Community members who would like to help can make a donation one of two ways. First, a financial donation can be made through a GoFundMe, or gift cards or meals can be made through a meal train online. Both to the, both links to that fundraiser, fundraiser, can be found on Facebook through the page called Empowered San Dimas. These children attended our schools and live in our town. We can make a big difference by coming together to support them. You can log onto Facebook, view the short video of this family's journey, you can donate and share it with friends and family, because every dollar does count. Once again, the link can be found on the Facebook page, Empowered San Dimas. By coming together, we can make a huge difference in the lives of others. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you for calling, your three minutes starts now.
Uh, Council, um, I'm a little concerned that this issue about the grading even needs to be discussed because apparently it's about money, in my opinion. When a building is constructed, you must maintain a certain amount of drainage, according to the, uh, chapter in the building code, which is part of the municipal code. It has to drain from the back of the lot to the front of the lot. Not only that, but it has to drain away from the building to get to the front. So there's certain requirements that have to be, uh, applied as far as what the, uh, lot coverage is, besides we have a requirement for no more than 35%, I believe. So there's no, this guy could build, anybody could build anything they want because we have no restrictions. By doing that, then they need to extend their lot to have some kind of a backyard or something like that. I, I think until we have some discussion about, uh, the pad and what the building pad is, and, uh, then we could discuss possible extensions to the building pad, not to exceed 200 square feet, or make a smaller house. We don't have any sort of input from the building department and the, uh, code in regards to before we decide to change this, this code, I mean, this, uh, 200-foot yardage thing. A man that owns that kind of property has to build a house big enough to make him money. Bottom line, it's America. Guy wants to make money, he has to build a big house. When he builds a big house, he needs to extend it. Some of the guys are calling, they're having drainage problems, or somebody must have done something wrong at the city, either engineering or building department. But until we discuss what a building pad is, they can move a million yards if they wanted to for a building pad, and you won't say a word, but we're squawking about 200 square feet? You know, we could eliminate this thing and just say, you know, let's just put in a building pad, and that's the end of that. Why should we give them permits to build a house and then have to add another 200 feet? I, I don't think you guys are looking at the whole story, and that gets at the end of my time.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you for calling, your three minutes starts now.
Good evening, City Council. I wanted to let you and the residents of our fine city know that this week San Dimas is gaining a new newspaper, the San Dimas Community Post. The San Dimas Community Post is by residents of San Dimas, for residents of San Dimas, and covers topics of interest including restaurants, city council business, local events, and other issues. In our inaugural issue, we cover Pioneer Square, Proposition 15, Cali Management, Local Services for Residents, Butter Cafe and Bakery, and Bonita Unified School Board Candidate Positions. The paper will be published quarterly. The paper's team of volunteer reporters are a diverse mix of people, and include people who have never written for a paper before, and those who have years' experience in journalism. For those of you who want to check it out, this is sanddimascommunitypost.com. Again, that's sanddimascommunitypost.com, or pick up your printed copy at Starbucks on Bonita, Butter Cafe and Bakery, Railside Cafe, Palermo Bakery, Clutch Cafe, or Clutch Coffee, rather, Cazado's Italian Restaurant, San Dimas Grain Company, San Dimas Animal Hospital, Panera Bread, and a boutique, and about 20 other businesses located throughout the city. And if you're a business who wants to host our issue, please drop us a line, we'd love to have your support. And if you're a resident and you want to get involved or have feedback, drop us a line, we welcome your support and your input. Again, check us out at sanddimascommunitypost.com, or visit us on Facebook. Remember to be excellent to each other, and have a great evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, seeing that we have no, no further calls, we'll, um, move on with the agenda. Okay, consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council requests a separate discussion.
I move approval second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll move on. Okay, we're going to move into the San, San Dimas Housing Authority.
Good morning, City Councilmembers. Michael O'Brien, our Administrative Services Manager, is going to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Michael O'Brien, Administrative Services Manager. Tonight, staff is requesting that you, as representatives of the Housing Authority, adopt Resolution 20-09, authorizing the execution and delivery of financing documents to refinance the 1998 Mobile Home Park revenue bonds, and directing staff to enter into the company regulatory agreement. As we discussed at the previous Housing Authority meeting when we established a debt policy, the existing 1998 bonds have annual debt service of approximately $575,000 and a final maturity date of 2028. Security for the 1998 bonds included a lien on the deed of trust for the Mobile Home Park project, and the bonds are also contingently supported by a housing assistance agreement, the authority, the trustee, and the former San Dimas Urban Development Agency. The proposed refunding bond, uh, refunding provides significant savings and improves financial flexibility by reducing the bond rate from 5.7% to 1.85%, and the annual payment down to $508,000, while at the same time shortening the remaining life of the bonds from eight to five years by using various funds held by the trustee to pay down the principal, generating a $483,000 net present value savings for the Housing Authority, allowing us to generate more cash flow for future housing projects while simultaneously releasing the Housing Authority of the current lien on the deed of trust. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Dennis, John?
It's a great opportunity. Thank you for, uh, for getting it done. No problem.
Yeah, anytime we can save money, that's what we need to do, unfortunately, because as the times are, that we know how precious, you know, each and every dollar we have is at this point, although I understand we're doing a little bit better than we thought. Super.
Well, after the title is read, I would be willing to make a motion.
Okay, can we have the title read?
Mayor, we should see if there's any public comment on this.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, do we have any public comments? If you'd like to call in, we'll give you a couple of minutes here to, to, uh, call in concerning this matter. And the phone number is listed on your tele, television screen. John?
Give us one minute. No callers.
Yeah, seeing no calls, always good to see that people are happy when you're, when we're saving a little money.
Exactly. Well, in that, in that, uh, spirit, I, oh, I guess we need to have it read, I'm sorry. Sure.
Resolution 20-09, a resolution of the Commissioners of the City of San Dimas Housing Authority, authorizing the execution and delivery of financing documents to refinance certain 1998A bonds and directing certain actions with respect thereto.
I move that we review further reading and adopt Resolution 20-09.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you. The Resolution 20-09 passes unanimously, 5-0. Okay, we're going to move on to the next issue, a resolution of intention to abandon and dispose a portion of the parkland within Horse Thief Canyon Park. Let's see.
Mayor, uh, we, um, I'd like to announce that this item was, uh, entered onto the agenda at a public hearing. It, it's, in fact, should have been other, other business. It is not a legally required item, uh, for a public hearing, so it should be noted that it is an other business item and, and corrected as such.
Thank you. Staff?
Mayor, City Councilmembers, our senior planner, Marco Estados, is going to present this item.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you tonight is a resolution of intent to abandon and dispose of approximately 29,000 square feet of parkland along the southern property line of Horse Thief Canyon Park. On November-
On November 12, 2019, the city council held a public hearing on the land, on the land use entitlement for the proposed housing project at 299 East Foothill, which is shown on the screen there. The project also included 29,000 square feet of city parkland highlighted in yellow. The city council voted 5-0 to continue the item and to hold a separate meeting to determine whether the parkland should be used for the project. The city parks are considered a community asset, and state law specifically protects land and limits the authority of cities to abandon and sell portions of parkland or all parkland. Under Government Code Section 38501 through 35, 38, sorry, 510, properties or portions of park, sorry about that, properties or portions of properties acquired for park purposes but never used or improved, never improved or used by the public can be sold subject to compliance with provisions of this code. As part of these provisions, the city council must also adopt the following findings. One, that the park has never been used by the public for park purposes. Two, that no public funds have been used to improve the park. Three, that no other entities have paid for the park other than the city. And four, that the park is not appropriate or convenient or necessary for park purposes. The city council can and will be able to make the required findings as a subject property, subject parkland area is not suitable for park use due to its location or topography. The applicant proposes to incorporate about 29,000 square feet of parkland into the project, which consists primarily of a hillside slope and a flat area at the toe of the slope, which is highlighted in yellow on the screen. The overall project consists of 16 single-family parcels and a debris basin on site. If the city council adopts the resolution of intent tonight to dispose the property, the following steps will be required. One, at a planning commission meeting, the commission will make the findings consistent with the city's general plan and zoning. Two, the city council would conduct a public hearing on November 24, 2020 to approve the abandonment of the park and then declare the property surplus land and adopt a resolution and making the necessary findings discussed earlier. The city council, third, the city council authorizes to negotiate and execute a purchase and sales agreement to sell the parkland property. A notice of availability would be sent to the required agencies in compliance with the state law. With that, staff recommends that the city council adopt the attached resolution of intent to dispose of approximately 29,000 square feet of parkland and set a public hearing for November 24, 2020. And that concludes staff's report.
Okay, questions? I had a question about whether the developer is going to pay any money for the, it's mentioned in the last slide about negotiating a purchase price or something.
Correct.
So how does that work and will that purchase price be available before the public hearing or at the public hearing?
It would be done as part of negotiations after the November, after the November 24, 2020 meeting. We would open it up for anybody to actually submit a proposal to acquire the land, which would in turn also be the applicant. So we'd have to look to see who's acquiring and make sure that we negotiate with any party in addition to the applicant. But more than likely, it would just be the applicant because nobody else would have access to those properties and it's not really developable by itself. So it's more than likely just going to be the applicant. At that time, if we wish to go forward, that's when the property would be evaluated for its value and then it'd be negotiations between the city and the applicant on the value of that property. And until you guys come up with a consensus of what that property value would be and move forward with that process.
And then does that decision come back to the city council to approve the price?
Yeah, well, the entitlement and the approval, that would be done as part of the entitlement for the project at the same time. We'd run them concurrently.
So that would be at some other public hearing down the road when the applicant is presenting his proposal to the city council?
Correct, with already kind of somewhat an understanding of the price that would be set.
Got it.
I have a question. Are you finished?
No, go ahead.
After the price is determined, and let's say we go through with this and we sell the property, does the money that we receive from this have to be used for park purposes? Or does it go into the general fund?
That and not 100%.
No, it would go into the general fund.
It would go, oh, oh. That makes a big difference.
We could always specify that it go to Fund 20 or some other park fund if we wanted to.
Is that true, Jeff?
Yes, you can budget the money however you'd like.
I have one quick question. At the east end of that property, there was a small portion of property that was supposedly being talked about, it belonged to the developer, and that was going to be a portion of, or some part of this deal? What's going on with that?
That no longer, after discussion with city staff, is going, it was originally discussed that we, they would give that land in exchange for the other land potentially as a deal. After further discussion with city staff, it's been determined that that portion of the tailpiece would really not be beneficial for the city or the park. So we decided not to move forward with that particular option of negotiating an exchange. We'd rather just want, we'd prefer that the applicant just pay for the land highlighted in yellow and they keep that tailpiece.
All right, I just have one more question. Okay, the potential sale of this property is dependent upon that project, the developer's project at 299, being approved. If in fact, this body determines that they're not going to approve that project, does this sale and all these negotiations go by the wayside? We're not selling them that property to be attached to that property for a later sale, right?
Correct. So the way it's written is that, if the project's approved, we move forward with the sale of the land for that project.
Okay, so he could not buy that property from us. We deny the project. That does not become a portion of his property to go off and sell to the next developer.
Correct. He cannot.
So if, for clarification, if the city council doesn't wish to abandon the parkland after tonight, then the applicant would have to go back and try and re-engineer the project to fit everything on his property without the park abandonment property?
And then I, one, I'm sorry, guys. Just one additional question to Jeff, our city attorney. That is parkland, at several meetings prior to this meeting, there were lots of conversation about parkland and our ability to abandon it or, I believe, as Dennis was starting to proceed, is how is that money going to go back to our parks? And so, and John answered that. My question is really a simple thing, is that this project, I just do not want the opportunity for him to be able, or whoever it is, to be able to sell that property and add that additional property onto it as a selling portion because I don't want, I don't want to give away parkland, even though it's uninhabitable. I don't want to give it away just to enhance somebody else's, you know, project.
Yeah, the only way that the applicant would be able to do that is if the city council agreed to abandon the parkland that's highlighted in yellow and we agreed to sell it to them. The purchase and sale agreement would be the process that Councilmember Evner was asking about as far as the terms and where we would put those funds would be all part of the purchase and sale agreement. That would be brought before the council at a future date if the council approves the park abandonment process tonight.
So I think what the concern is, is that in a scenario that we, and we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but in that November 24 public hearing, let's say the council, after the public hearing, approves the project, the sale and everything else. And then the applicant, for whatever reason, because this happens all the time, decides not to build the project, for whatever reason, decides to sell the project. Of course, when they sell the project, they don't, the next person doesn't have to build the same project. They come back with something totally different, possibly. But what Emmett was alluding to was now the applicant has extra land to sell. So I suppose what you could do is if the applicant appears not to be moving forward but is still offering us a certain amount of money, we could deny the sale at that point because we just say, well, it's, you know, not the right amount of money or we don't want to do it, or I don't know. But I see the concern there that we don't want to just enhance somebody else's ability to buy, to sell the property. The idea is to get a project there that gets built.
So the initial meeting on November 24 would be a public hearing for the park abandonment process as well as the surplus land act starting that process. But it wouldn't include the, it wouldn't include the tentative map or it wouldn't include the entitlement or the purchase and sale agreement at that point. This is strictly, the November 24 meeting would be for the park abandonment process. So at a future point, that's when we would go through the sales. And without the purchase and sale agreement, we wouldn't be bringing that forward until the map was ready to go, we went through the park abandonment process, we went through the surplus land act, the purchase and sale agreement, all the general planment, all the entitlements required for this map. It would be all going concurrently after the park abandonment and surplus land act process.
Thanks for clarifying the timeline because I was getting it a little bit wrong there, so appreciate that.
Yep.
I'm not opposed to abandoning the property, but I would like to make it in condition, could we, that the money be used for park and recreation purposes? Could we put that condition on it?
That could be part of the purchase and sale agreement?
We can look into that. It doesn't need to be decided tonight because we, this is just to call the public hearing for the next meeting, but.
Could you look into it then?
I'm not sure that you can restrict how the, how future councils may want to use those funds when we receive them into the general fund because it's the council's decision how you want to use the money. But we can have that answer for the next meeting and the public hearing if you decide that you'd like to go forward with the public hearing.
What's the, thank you, what or is the, I remember last time we talked about this, the debris flow retention basin. Is that a completely separate discussion? Or where are we at with that as it relates to this and the transaction? That is correct. That's a separate issue. The applicant, as shown up on the screen, is proposing to put the basin on their property at this time.
There was some discussion that the last time this project came before the council about the applicant potentially wanting to put the debris basin on other parkland north of the site. And he since then has decided he would just like to go forward with this project.
Thank you.
I have just one more question, Henry and Marco. Thanks for your presentation. And that's in the findings that we need to make, there's four of them. The second one says no public funds have been expended to improve the specified portion of the land as a park. So the park that we're selling, I believe, includes the slope, right? Includes the slope, or is it just at the toe of the slope?
It's a small portion of the slope. Let me see here. So, so it goes maybe up to here and then it comes back down. And so this is the flat portion here. This fence line is about the PL here. So we're looking at this land and then coming up, a little bit up on the hill here, on one portion of it, and then it comes back down.
So that's a great picture. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that we meet the findings if we go forward. And so is it true that you would not consider grading and building a slope to make the rest of the park flat up on the top? Would that not count as expending money to improve the specified portion?
So these slopes here have always been there prior to the city purchasing the parkland. So never has this been graded, nor could we find documentation showing that we have graded. The city attorney has prepared a memo previously showing aerials going back prior to us owning, prior to the city owning the parkland, showing the existing slopes already there. So nothing has been spent in the way of grading or landscaping or irrigation in that area.
Okay, perfect. So that's condition two. Now, the first one talks about the specified portion of the park has not been used for the public for park purposes. Now, I'm seeing a trail of some kind. Has the public ever used that trail or where did that trail come from?
So what we understand kind of is that it's never been used for, by the city for park purposes. There might have been some unpermitted encroachment by the equestrian facility onto the flat area there for some other use, but it wasn't by the park, people from the park.
And that would be something to just make sure with, maybe Jeff could make sure about that because the condition is that it hasn't been used by the public.
For park purposes.
For park purposes.
Correct.
I'm just wondering if anybody could make an argument that riding your horse along there or taking a hike or whatever like that would be using that part for park, I mean, after all, what is park purposes? It's pretty broad, right? I mean, running around, kicking a ball, taking your dog, or just having a picnic or hiking along, you know, the walking path or whatever.
Correct.
So I'm just, just want to make sure everything's airtight on this. And so that's a question I would have, maybe answer it at the public hearing, at least. Make note of it and why that trail does not, does not count as public using it.
And I just want to clarify, that's not a trail, it's just a flat, flatter area of land there. It's not a trail itself. It doesn't lead to anything.
Right, thanks.
Any additional questions? Okay. And this is not a public hearing, so we'll move on. Recommendation, staff recommends that city council adopt the attached resolution of intent to dispose of property comprised of the portion of two parcels, ABN 8665-007-900 and -905. And we'll set a public hearing for the date of November 24 pursuant to the government code.
Mayor, a couple things. It is not a legal public hearing, but we do still need to see if there's any public comment on the item. And additionally, adopting the resolution is going to require a vote of the council.
Thank you. All right, I guess we're going to open it up for public communications. If you have any interest in this item on the agenda, please do so by calling in. The number is on your television set. So please call and we'll be more than happy to listen to your conversation and have staff respond to it. One call, okay?
No, give us a second.
Okay. One, okay.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Yes, hi, my name is Steve Hunter. I'm with Land Design Consultants. We're the applicant's land planner and engineer. And I've listened to the proceedings and I'm just. land planner engineer, and I've listened to the proceedings, and I'm just here to answer any questions that the council may have. If not, I'm looking forward to the November 24th hearing, where the applicant and myself will get an opportunity to describe this to the, to the council.
Any questions?
Hi, my name is Steve Hunter. I'm with Land Design Consultants. We're the applicant's land planner engineer, and...
Could you please turn your device to mute?
I'm just here to answer any questions that the council may have. If not, I'm looking forward to the November 24th hearing, where the applicant and myself will get an opportunity to...
Sure, will you please turn off your other device, your TV or computer, please?
Yes, I'm with Land Design Consultants. We're the applicant's land planner engineer.
Mayor, city council, do any of you have questions for the call?
Any questions?
No.
Okay, any other callers?
One more.
Thank you for calling your live.
Hi, I'm actually calling just because I actually don't have necessarily, like, concerns with the development, or abandoning the little sliver of parkland. But, something that was on the agenda that popped up was the removal of 59 mature trees. I believe that's over the whole development, not just the little sliver of parkland. And I'm wondering if the, if that could be clarified, of whether any of those 59 mature trees are the protected oak trees. And, because just, you know, uprooting mature oak trees, even if you're replacing them two to one, you know, replacing oak trees isn't necessarily, you know, an easy task to do. So, if someone could please clarify whether, either this date if you know, or in the future, if any of the 59 mature trees that are being removed for this project in the future are mature oak trees. Thank you so much.
Marco, could you address that?
There is a few oak trees as part of the removal for this project.
What is the number few?
I was just making sure we can talk about the project itself during this time.
Yeah, it's, it's not really relevant, but if you want to quickly answer, then you can.
Oak trees, we're probably talking about maybe 10, and that's approximate. It's been a while since I've seen the staff report, so.
All right. And just for the caller and anybody else's benefit, part of the, so not the November 24th public hearing, but the one in the future sometime, when we discuss the entire project, would include the tentative tract map, the approval of whatever, and plus a tree removal permit, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct.
So, prior to that meeting, we would have the exact number, probably a tree report, and that whole shot. And, before that, it probably goes to the planning commission, I'm thinking?
It already went to planning commission.
Okay, so they already saw it. So, we'll, so anyway, for the caller and anybody else, that is an important point, and you can see the map and see where the trees are, and I don't know if any are going to be saved or not, but that's off.
It's all going to be in the staff.
It'll all be there in the staff report, and we'll talk about it.
Including a replacement plan.
And that will be a public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
A future, not the 24th.
Not the 24th.
Yes. We still have to go through this process.
Got it.
Yes.
All right, any further calls?
One more.
Thank you for calling your live.
Hi, good evening, city council. I'm just addressing a concern about the flat area behind the PL on this project. I don't have a concern with abandoning that portion of the park. However, if the trail is being used as an equestrian trail, I really think we need to gather clarity about the amount of usage before we go ahead and approve to abandon this project. So, I just really appreciate council member Emmett for bringing that issue up, because it's good to know how that unofficial flat area is being used by the public, because it's such a broad definition. So, just going forward to our next meeting, if they could provide absolute clarity on that, that would be wonderful. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Okay, seeing that we, we have no further calls, we'll move on. Other business, appointment of the city council ad hoc committee?
Mayor, the...
We've got a resolution.
The council needs to vote.
Sorry. Okay, can I, is there a motion?
I'll move approval, and do we need to read by title?
I'll second. There is no title.
There is no title, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll move approval.
There is a title.
There's a resolution, yeah.
Resolution title.
2020-55, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Resolution 2020-55, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, declaring its intent to abandon and dispose of approximately 29,000 square feet of Horse Thief Canyon Park, located at the toe of slope along the south property line, APNs 8665-007-900 and 905, pursuant to government code sections 38501-38510, and setting a public hearing for November 24th, 2020.
We'll wait for the reading and move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Mayor, I'm going to abstain from this vote. Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention, councilman Vienna abstains. Can I ask the city attorney to look into if we can put restrictions on how this money is used?
Yeah, I made a note of that.
Thank you.
I'll bring that back.
And also, as the last caller asked, some type of ascertain what we think the use of that trail is, because it's not an authorized trail, I don't imagine. So, just trying to give her some, you know, clarity on what we believe. All right, thank you. Okay, other business, staff?
US mayor, city council members, the next item on the agenda is appointment of a city council ad hoc committee to discuss approaches for interim housing for people experiencing homelessness. The Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, also known as LASSA, recommended send a letter recommending that the city of Glendora, in collaboration with the city of Laverne, San Dimas, and Claremont, and potentially others, adopt a subregional strategy to identify, identifying people experiencing homeless, unsheltered homelessness, and move them into interim housing, an interim housing site. The city of Glendora has identified potential opportunities for this type of housing. Many different types of funding streams have been identified to support the development and operation of temporary housing. And according to LASSA, a significant portion of capital funds from their interim housing site in Glendora could be made available through the 5th district housing capital fund pool. The ongoing operation of the site and provisions of wraparound services that would be provided could be supported through measure H funding. Therefore, a subregional interim housing strategy across the identified cities of Glendora, Laverne, Claremont, and San Dimas will allow for a higher degree of local prioritization to meet subregional needs. This approach will ensure that individuals experiencing homelessness within San Dimas and jurisdictions and partnering cities will be prioritized for connections to these resources. With that, staff recommends that the city council appoint an ad hoc committee of two council members to discuss potential opportunities of collaborating with the cities I had mentioned on interim housing solution to help people experiencing homeless. So, with that, the request is for the council to appoint two members to this committee.
Okay, first off, does anybody on the council have any objection to us becoming involved in this, this collaboration?
No.
It's a good idea.
No.
Okay, then appointment, is there anybody who would like to volunteer for this?
I'm happy to volunteer.
I've, I've sat in on a couple of, oh, I guess one meeting already, so if, if there's no other takers, I don't mind sticking with it, but...
Well, first speaks up, first gets it. So, I would move that we appoint Ryan. I don't know if there's any other comments.
I have no comments.
Appoint councilmember Vienna, councilmember Weber, as the members of this ad hoc committee to solve the homelessness problem.
I stand.
Does anybody have any all in favor? You guys can't do, can't vote against it. All right, as of now, councilman Vienna and councilman Weber will be the city's representative to this group that's hopefully, like, like everybody said, solve the homeless problems.
Once and for all, right?
One and for all.
Like the measure SD vote you guys did to me to write the ballot statement.
Well, if you want to write a ballot statement for this, you go ahead.
I'm good.
I don't think you need a ballot statement for this one, but I'm sure that you guys will come up with something, and, and for a cause that is obviously needed throughout, throughout the entire county. And, you know, we want to thank Glendora for stepping up to the plate, because it sounds like they're really pushing this forward, and so, probably going to supply us a place to, to do this. So, thank, thank the mayor over there and the city council.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Number B, under other business, letter of support for Lone Hill Stormwater Infiltration Project, resolution 2020-56, staff?
Yeah, mayor, the city council members, our public works director, Sherry Garwick, can present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight is a request for you to consider approving a letter of approval for a stormwater grant application at Lone Hill Park. Lone Hill Park's located at the northwest corner of the city, south of Gladstone, north of Juanita, and just east of Shelton. So, the grant application is for the design and potential construction of a stormwater treatment project. Because this, the grant includes the design, the concept is fairly preliminary at this time. But, essentially, the concept would be to divert storm water flow from storm drain pipe on Juanita that flows just south of the park, divert it into a treatment facility that cleans the storm water, and removes any contaminants, and then further diverts it into the park, and infiltrates that water into the ground. All of the improvements would be underground, so that would leave the top part of the park for whatever recreational purposes the city determines. The grant is through the regional funding for the safe clean water funds, or measure W that was approved in 2018. There are several benefits with the project. First off, we have stormwater treatment, so it cleans storm water. But, we also have infiltration, which has a, a number of benefits. It helps recharge the groundwater system, and it also reduces erosion of our streams by reducing the amount of water that is, that peak flows into the streams. There's also some community benefit for the, the grant, for the project, because the surface is actually available for whatever use the city determines. The city can, can build recreational devices on, on the, in the park. For this, for this project, we're proposing to, we've worked with the Parks and Rec director, and we're looking at the proposals to provide a drought tolerant garden, as well as a playground for special needs children. They also would include a parking lot. Staff recommends that the council consider sending a letter of approval by approving resolution 2020-56. Unless you have further questions, that concludes my presentation.
I don't really have a question, but I have a comment. I think this kind of groundwater infiltration, or filtration system is a great idea. And, you know, it's, it's, hopefully, the first of, or, an ongoing process of doing these kinds of things, because the more water we keep where it falls, the better it is for, for the environment and the groundwater and everything else. The second thing I like about the proposal is the special needs playground. Several years ago, I spoke with our then director, Teresa Brunz, about that kind of an idea, and trying to make, you know, going forward, all of our playgrounds more amenable to those with disabilities. And, so, you know, as, as I called it then, you know, a park, park for all, basically. And, so, I'm really glad to see this here. We did that at Marshant Park with equipment that it can be used by all, but if I understand, this one is even geared more toward those who, you know, can't participate fully in regular playground equipment, so it's, it's just made for everybody.
That is correct. Hector Kistman, the director of Parks and Recreation, is, is working with the provider of the equipment, specifically for special needs, and including autistic children, so.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is it all possible, you know, and I absolutely think it's fabulous, that we're, we're looking at this for special needs, and a way to, to solve two or three different problems. Is there enough, and I think there is enough park area around there, to make sure that we have adequate facilities for, you know, other children to be able to play on the park, and park stuff, not just strictly what we're worrying about? Because we're going to have kids go there to play on it, and, you know, of all, all types. And, if we added some equipment on the outskirts of this particular facility to, that would allow the bigger children, or the children that don't, you know, really need, don't have special needs, you know, I don't want to second fiddle the disability people, kids, because we all know that they need the, the ability to get outside and do the things that kids do. And, because they're all, they're all, they're all kids, and, I mean, even big kids go play, play on stuff. So, I just would like to make sure we look at some of the things around there. You know, out here, in our community park, we used to have some kind of jungle gyms and stuff like that, but they seem like they've disappeared. And, I get calls quite often, you know, not as often as when we have music in the park, but people are still, kids are looking for a place to be. And now, I believe we've opened up our parks, within the last couple of weeks, we now have the ability to let the kids play on our, on our jungle gym stuff, and, and that's good, because there was a long time that they were, had to be restrictive, so. But, thank you. So, what do we need?
Mayor, we need to see if there's any public comment on this item.
Okay. We'll open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on this matter, please give us a call. The phone number's on the, on the TV screen.
Give us 40 more seconds.
Give you what?
30 seconds.
Maybe one more minute, mayor.
Thank you.
While we're waiting, Mr. Mayor, Steve Farmer, the Parks Department, did mention that the playground to the east of the proposed project is ADA accessible and is for regular playground equipment.
Super, super.
While we're waiting for calls as well, so it looks like the rectangle box there is like the area of the project, right?
Yes, so the underground system would be in this area in blue.
That's pretty impressive. It's a, that's a big project.
The grant application's for between about 6.6 to 10 million, so.
Yeah, that's great.
What do you think our chances are?
Well, it's regional funding, so... Well, it's regional funding. So the, the way the, the Safe Clean Water Act or Safe Clean Water Funds are, the regional funds are supposed to be spent in the area that they are generated. So.
Yeah, good.
Mayor, there's, sorry, there's no, no calls.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve staff's recommendation for, uh, the letter of support, uh, and attachments. A and B is recommended, and then introduce Resolution 2056.
So we're talking attachment A, B, and C?
Yep.
Okay?
It would be to adopt the resolution.
That's, that's what I meant to say. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a, I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we need to read, uh.
Resolution 2020 dash 56. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, State of California, approving and authorizing the mayor to sign letter of support on behalf of the City Council for the Lone Hill Park Stormwater Project Application to the Safe Clean Water Regional Program.
I move to wait for the reading and adopt.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Eric? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we'll go to, uh, we have a financial report, I believe, from Michael.
Yeah, Mayor, the city council, the, the 2020 21 budget was approved by the city council on June 23rd. Uh, the budget assumptions were incorporated into the, the budget based on the 2019-20 fourth quarter economic ramifications of COVID-19 that were known at that time. As part of the budget adoption, staff plan to bring, um, the budget back to city council with an update at approximately three months, which is why we're here today, giving this, this update. Um, it's important to note that we're still reviewing the current fiscal year 2020-21 budget numbers, as the COVID restrictions have continued, um, to be in place months after the original financial consultant, HDL's, uh, projections that were used when developing the budget. Um, so I just want to preface that, that, that the projections, and Michael will go into more detail, uh, indicated that the restrictions would end in May, however, they've continued. So their projections might be a little bit off, which were incorporated into the budget. But Michael's going to present that. Our Administrative Services Manager, Michael O'Brien, um, thank you for taking the side of.
Good evening. Once again, Mayor and City Council, Michael O'Brien, Administrative Services Manager. As our interim City Manager Brad McKenna has alluded to, this report will break down the city's financial position as of the end of June 30, uh, 2020, which was the end of the 2019-20 fiscal year. At this point, just to give you some background, the 2019-20 fiscal year accounting has been reviewed by our independent auditors, LSL CPAs. We also had a audit by Metro and the State Controller, who helps conduct our street report, uh, for accuracy in our financial reporting. And as of Friday, we have received the first draft of our financial report from LSL CPAs and is currently being reviewed. There may still be minor adjustments to financial records as we review the report, but at this time, we are confident that any changes will not be of any significant value. So heading into the final quarter of the 2019-20 fiscal year, the entire nation was tasked with addressing an emergency event unlike anything that we have experienced. The shutting down of our economy and the restrictions that soon followed in an attempt to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus left our financial outlook very unclear as to how much and for how long the city's ability to generate revenues would be affected and to what extent our operations would be hindered. The COVID-19 pandemic forced a shutdown of facility rentals, the recreation center, recreation classes, excursions, events, city parks, the golf course, and for a period of time, access to City Hall by our public. To assist our residents during this time and our businesses, we suspended parking enforcement, which put a stop to all additional parking permit and citation revenues. We extended the due dates for the June 30 business license rules to September 30th, and refunded all fees for recreation classes and excursions that would not take place. The pandemic also created concerns over how much economic activity would take place. Reductions in sales, franchise, and transient occupancy taxes were projected to be greatly reduced by our sales tax consultants and our franchisees. As a result of these expectations of revenue reductions, city staff moved quickly to adjust our operations and plan for a 2021 budget that would reflect these anticipated reductions and conduct our operations in a manner that would dip into reserves, but keep it at a near 70% reserve for the end of the 2021 budget. I am, however, happy to report tonight that while we did have reductions in various revenue streams, the overall collections for the year did not reflect the significant reductions we feared. The fund balance for the end of the 2018-19 fiscal year at the end, through the end of the 2019-20 fiscal year increased by $176,624. However, 157,248 of that will need to be carried over to the 2021 budget to complete contracted purchase orders and projects anticipated to be paid for with the 2019-20 budget figures. That still will leave us with an increase of $18,776 to the unaside fund balance. The effective fund balance at the end of the 2019-20 fiscal year is $20,578,359, which is $1,914,521 over where we anticipated to be at the end of the 1920 fiscal year as we presented the 2021 budget. This increase above the estimated figures was a result of higher than anticipated revenues, which came in $1,465,148 above estimates. That increase included categories such as sales tax, which came in $634,075 above estimates, use of money in property, which mostly consists of interest revenues, which was $512,078 above estimates, which is really a reflection of increases in the fair market value. Because during this COVID crisis, the Fed reduced interest rates so significantly, the replacement value for investment that we currently have held is so much lower. I think now it's about half a percent. You can get a five-year CD when we were purchasing CDs just a year ago, around three to 2%. So those CDs that we've held on to have become more valuable, which has increased the book value of those interests of those assets. Franchise and TOT taxes were $144,466 and $134,045, respectively, increased above estimates. Building engineering permits continued to come in strongly despite anticipated reduction in construction activity. Those combined were $51,614 above estimates. Along with those increased revenues, expenditures came in underestimates by a total of $617,221. For the majority of our expenditure categories, community development had the largest reductions. However, much of that had to do with the housing element downtown specific land, whose funds were earmarked in 1920, knowing that whatever was not completed would be carried over into the 2021 budget. So most of that carryover is going to be from the housing element and downtown civic land. General services were $75,728 below estimates, mostly arriving from anticipated GIS updates that will be addressed in the 2021 funds, and credit card fees that were reduced due to increased payment activity. Public safety came in $75,728 below estimates due to the budgeted community services officer not being utilized. Public, uh, public work estimates costs came in $258,544 below estimates due to project management services that were delayed due to the pandemic, decreased estimates from the graffiti removal, street sweeping, and delayed work on the municipal parking district lot, and reductions in fuel and supply costs, just because of less activity. Parks and Recreation total operating costs were $89,701 above estimates, however, that was somewhat offset by salary savings of $47,318. When we look at the budget activity for the 2021 budget, and we add the increases to the fund balance for the 2019-20 fiscal year, this leaves us with expected any fund balance for the fiscal year 2021 of $18,87756, which represents a general fund reserve of 78% when compared to the 2021 operating expenditures, an increase of 8.5% from the anticipated reserve balance that was presented in that budget. And that is the reserve, uh, policy that we have to be at 78%. So we're back to that goal.
78?
Yeah. In terms of special funds, we did, we did see some reductions in the estimated revenues for gas tax, Measure R, Measure M taxes, which help us to complete road projects. These reductions will affect our ability to complete future projects. However, the reductions were not as significant as many fear they would be. Overall, the majority of special funds came in above estimates and looked relatively healthy as we begin work on the 2021 budget. While this is obviously a good result over what we thought at the end of 1920 would look like, our 2021 budget was built around the idea that the shutdown and restrictions would be coming to an end by September. Our sales tax consultant gave estimates assuming the shutdowns would end by June. So while the 2019-20 results give us more optimism about our incoming revenues, the extended closures and restrictions give us hesitation as to what extent our 2021 revenue projections may be affected. While we typically at this time sign the surplus funds for the prior fiscal year to help address additional projects, our purse unfunded liability payments, or maintenance, it is staff recommendation that we hold off making any adjustments to our expenditure budgets until we get a better sense of what our 2021 revenues will be looking like. We would like to take back to council any recommendations for use of additional funds in February of 2021, mostly because the majority of our, our revenues will start hitting the sales tax only in these months, basically September through December, and then January, we get our first big property tax payment. So we'll have a real good idea of what we're looking like for the rest of the year. We do have one correcting item that we'd like to be appropriate at this meeting, which is increase the general fund expenditure budget for the housing element by $10,000 in order for the expenditures to equate the grant revenues that are being received. The difference was an oversight during the budget process and discovered during our review for carryovers. Uh, this increase of the budget matches what was reported at the July 14 council meeting, where you approved the contract with Place Works to complete the housing element. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Michael, I just wanted to say, one, congrats. I mean, it was no easy feat, and I know, uh, money's, money can be boring, and I think that when everything's good, nobody really says anything, and, you know, you just kind of strum along. Um, and we see, you know, around this time to talk about what, you know, allocations perhaps we can make. But I think in the, you know, as I know I harped on at the onset of the pandemic and the, and the local declaration of the emergency, um, I've heard a, a lot of positive things from your colleagues on staff, um, you know, and from Brad, that, you know, how we've worked to capture revenues that we can, both pursuant to the pandemic emergency, um, how we've been able to leverage, um, the, the negativeness of the pandemic actually brought with it some positive things for, for our city and some improvements, I think, and some fiscal smartness. And you showed how nimble we could be with our budget, um, while still preserving the fiscal responsibility that the council and the citizens here love to see. So, um, super positive. Uh, I agree and intend to wholeheartedly take your recommendation as written and move forward. But I just wanted to take a second to applaud you because the one thing that, you know, out of all the issues we talk about, the money is where it stops. I mean, that's the bottom line. And so, um, I know, uh, many people that are going to be very happy to have heard or watched this report. So thank you for that, and everyone that worked with you, and every member of staff and the directors too, because everybody, everybody came and gave up a little, uh, some gave more than others. But, uh, at the end of the day, uh, I think the entire city worked together to pull through this. So, um, but I know, you know, when you're the guy sitting back there with the calculator and everything else, it's, sometimes can be a little stressful. So good job. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Other, uh, comment more than a question, but, um, you know, our sales tax revenues were higher than expected, which was fantastic. And I think that's probably, uh, speaks to the, uh, community engaging our, our businesses in the community, uh, like we had, uh, set out to do at the very beginning of this, which, uh, which is fantastic. It means that, uh, people are listening and it's working. Um, and maybe just a reminder that, you know, this sounds like it's probably, um, you know, not going to go away by the Christmas season, and Christmas season is, uh, just right around the corner. People are going to start shopping. And there was a, uh, a piece on the radio today about how, uh, online sales of, uh, Christmas presents are supposed to, you know, uh, be 60% higher than they were in the past. So maybe just a, a reminder that as you're doing your Christmas shopping, uh, on Amazon or something like that, that, uh, you remember to give our, our local businesses a little of your love too.
Super. Michael, I just want to say, I, I think you've done a heck of a job, and I appreciate it. But I think your job became a little easier by the, by the staff, the entire staff, from, from the lowest guide, you know, paid guide down all the way through the system, doing, doing the job that they, you know, were paid to do. And as I talk, as I'm around City Hall and I'm talking to employees, that they, they're happy that they're here, they're happy that they're serving the community, and, uh, I don't think we, I can't put my finger on one project that didn't have some results of being done, completed. I don't think anybody, you know, Parks didn't complain, Parks people are out there working, Public Works people were out there working all the way through this. There was resources available for any type of emergency that we had, and, uh, our, our entire staff needs to be commended, because by doing what they did, gave us an opportunity to have a little more revenue and, uh, to do what we need to do around here and to keep it. And the community naturally needs to be, um, commended for all their support of, of the businesses. I mean, we have restaurants that are opening up, and, uh, they're doing a, a great job. They've, they've been, they've been very practical at trying to put, you know, tables out, you know, uh, it's really amazing. You drive through this city and you see, see what this community has done. You have to be proud to say, I'm from San Dimas. But Michael, I just wanted to say thanks, because numbers mean a lot to us, as you know. To tell us we have 78% and we're back to 78%, that's, that's huge. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, the, obviously, the staff took this very seriously and, and made all the adjustments necessary to make sure that we were, well, no matter how the revenues fell, that we were going to be in a, in a decent position going forward and to address this, uh, need. And, you know, even the, all the staff, they, they made sacrifices, you know, not asking for the things they normally would ask for, and understand that this is something we're all having to deal with, and we need to keep, you know, the city going the way it's used to going, and then providing the services we're used to delivering. And then everybody stepped up in that way, for sure.
Not to, uh, not to put a damper on the mood, but we did, in fact, not move a couple positions to full time yet, and a few of those things, right? So all of the, all of this is predicated on everything that we decided back in whenever it was till now, right? So all those measures, we're recommending that we hold fast with everything as is until we can look at the rest of the outcome, correct?
Correct. So, uh, we, you know, the 78% reserve is, is based on this really condensed budget, um, which we took a lot out of from what we originally wanted, as you remember. So that's where we would fall if we kept it as is. Um, but to do any sort of, you know, bring on new, new employees or, or new staff or anything of that nature would obviously affect that 78% reserve. Thank you.
Super. Thank you. Any, any further? Let's move on.
Uh, Mayor, point of order.
Oh.
Yeah, I'll move approval of staff's recommendation, uh, as outlined in the report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thanks, Michael. Okay, I guess we move on to, uh, COVID-19 update. Brad?
Yeah, Mayor, city council members, quickly, uh, we, we continue to provide the community with up-to-date information through press releases and social media. Um, and we're working with restaurants, um, throughout the city on their desire to install outdoor shades, um, canopies, something to, to protect them from the weather, um, which a lot of them are taking advantage of. Um, and we continue to work with them as the guidelines change. Um, LA County Public Health has tons of resources on their website, which include printable posters for businesses to take advantage of, um, so they're not creating their own. They can go on there and get the template and print it out for, um, their staff and to keep, uh, customers safe. Um, and as of today, in San Dimas, according to LA County Public Health, uh, there have been 566 total cases, um, 700, or 7,391 tests completed, and, um, 15 deaths in San Dimas. If you want to view the full summary, you can go to LA County Public Health, um, dashboard, and there's, there's detailed information on all the different cities around. With that, that concludes my COVID update.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Brad about COVID-19? Any questions to Brad about COVID-19? Let's pray we don't have any further deaths. Gold Line update, Brad?
Yes, the contractor installed traffic signal foundations, finished the water line easements, installed conduit banks for both the light well and the freight train, and is continuing to work on the storm drain over Gladstone. The Gladstone closure will be extended through, hopefully, October 30th. Staff is working with Costco and any other mitigations or adjustments that need to be made to traffic control. As of, Wheeler Avenue in Laverne, as of today, has been closed, which will last about three months. The detour will impact San Dimas Canyon Road from Benita to Arrow Highway, Benita Avenue from Wheeler and San Dimas Canyon Road, and Arrow Highway between Wheeler and San Dimas Canyon Road. Although it's in Laverne, it's going to affect us here in San Dimas. And again, just to update on the tentative closure schedule, Euclid Avenue north of Benita is closed December 2020 through March 2021, Cataract Avenue of Benita, late March 2021 through September 21, Wallen Avenue south of Benita, May 21 through July 21, San Dimas Canyon Road north of Arrow Highway, July 21 through October 21, and San Dimas Avenue south of Benita, October 21 through December 21. In addition to my update, I'm going to ask our Public Works Director, Sherry Garwick, to provide an update on some Gold Line activities surrounding the land that's required at the Benita-Cataract property for the bridge and the adjustment to the street. So, Sherry?
And before we start the site, because Councilmember Ebner owns property within 500 feet of that site, he probably should recuse himself from this discussion.
All right, I'll be back in a few minutes.
Good job.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Sherry Garwick, Director of Public Works. Staff did want to bring to your attention that the Metro Gold Line Foothill Extension Construction Authority has sent the city a notice of hearing of proposed resolution of necessity for a portion of the property that is located at 344 West Benita Avenue, which is the vacant property at the south side of Benita Avenue west of Cataract. The hearing is one of the beginning steps in the eminent domain process for acquisition of land. This is the parcel that was provided in the notice. This appears to be very similar to the parcel that has been discussed as being transferred in previous discussions with the Gold Line. Let me give you a, this is a construction drawing. Benita Avenue is up here, currently it goes straight. This is Cataract Avenue right here. So the proposed alignment of Benita Avenue is to shift to the south and provide a better, a better crossing angle with the tracks. This piece of property right here that's in, that's kind of in yellow with the hash marks, is the proposed area of acquisition by the Gold Line. The parcel in question is approximately 17,597 square feet and is owned by the successor agency. The initial valuation of the parcel was estimated by the authority's real estate expert at The parcel itself, as you can see, will ultimately be returned to the city as public right-of-way once construction is complete. While eminent domain has many negative connotations, it's a vehicle that eliminates some of the complications involved in divesting land owned by the successor agency. It will allow the quicker occupation of the property by the Gold Line authority by the use of a prejudgment possession process. This will allow the construction schedule that the city manager or interim city managers mentioned will allow that to remain on track. It also will allow the city the right to negotiate the price of the property in the future. Also wanted to mention that the developer, the proposed development in this property was made aware of the parcel that will be acquired by the Gold Line and was okay with Yet, this update is for information only, and unless council directs otherwise, such as for staff to oppose the property acquisition, there is no further action required at this time. This concludes the presentation unless you have further questions.
Could you just, with your highlighter there, show me where the track's actually going to go?
Right here.
So it goes through, that's...
At that angle.
All right, so if that's going to be that, how come the bridge, how does that corner of the bridge have anything to do with that property?
So, the light rail is going to be actually on the bridge, the freight train is going to remain at grade. So when you have the, the closer your angle of intersection is with the street and the railroad, actually the safer that angle, or the safer that crossing is. So what this does is it actually brings the crossing to a more of a, more of a perpendicular angle.
All right. Any questions, Sherry?
Who's going to bring the eminent domain? The Gold Line?
Yes.
Is that, is that property now is owned by the city, right?
The successor.
The successor agency.
Successor agency.
Which provides an element of complication, because the successor agency can approve the acquisition, but it has to go through the consolidated oversight board at the county for approval and review.
Okay, thank you.
So we really don't have anything, any say in it?
No, the Gold Line Authority has the ability to take this portion of the property by eminent domain and to begin using it under a prejudgment possession order before they actually have title to the property, but then before they get the real title, we'll be able to negotiate with them for the fair market value of the, of that portion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Sherry?
I also wanted to bring up, Mr. Mayor, that staff is setting up an outreach meeting for the downtown businesses to go over the impacts of the Gold Line. Many of the businesses are aware that the crossing at Benita and Cataract is going to be closed, but there are some other construction impacts and construction locations that will affect the downtown, and we want to make sure that they're aware of that and that we provide them with as much resources as possible. The meetings are October 21st at 5:30 at Walker House, as well as October 22nd at the Walker House.
Can we have those in-person meetings that way, or do they have to be Zoom?
We're going to have it outdoors at the Walker House patio.
Okay.
Mayor, there'll be COVID protocols in place, social distancing outdoors to have that meeting.
Super. Thank you, Sherry. Could you make sure that I know those dates completely? John, if you're watching TV, come on in. Brad, anything else?
No, Mayor, that concludes my update.
Okay. Members of the audience, this will be in oral communication time. Speakers are limited to five minutes, or as determined by the chair. What we're going to do is have five minutes. At the end of five minutes, the city manager will thank you, and he'll click it and move on to the next one. We're going to limit this to 30 minutes because unfortunately the council has two extremely important closed sessions, and so at this point, we're going to go ahead and start.
Your five minutes starts now.
Am I starting now?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm, my name is Guy Christensen. I'm a resident of San Dimas in the Via Verde Ridge region. My address is 5008 Cali, Christina. I've been a resident for 30 years. I built a house in 1990, and we went through a lot of problems with this moving of the dirt. I have a neighbor next door that never built because of the situation, and many other lots are empty, and we need to change that rule.
Hello?
That's all I have to say.
Okay, sir, thank you very much.
No more calls.
We're going to give it a couple of minutes and see if anybody else calls in.
Thank you for calling. Your five minutes starts now.
Hello, my name's Phil Tellarico. I live up in Via Verde, and I have a question. Is the city engaged with the Golden State Water Company about mitigating the 24% water rate increase, or is there a plan to mitigate that? I, many of my neighbors and I have been asking questions about what the city, what the city's thoughts are on the water rate increase.
Sir, if you would give me your name and your phone number, I'll have a staff member give you a call. Unfortunately, we can't get into that by this process.
Yes, you're not coming up very quick.
Okay, if you would, either one like to give us your phone number and your name, I'll have the city manager or one of the people, the staff members, contact you tomorrow and discuss that with you, or you could call the city and ask for the city manager and discuss it with him.
Okay, I'll give you my phone number if you want, and you can try to contact me.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you, sir, thank you for your concern.
All right, bye.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move forward.
City managers report?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
City attorney?
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Members of the City Council, councilmen's report on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency?
I do have to report. I attended the League of California Cities Annual Conference and represented the cities as a voting delegate, and that was last week from Wednesday to Friday.
And I understand that was Zoom meetings?
It was brutal.
Brutal. Yeah, I believe so, I haven't heard that. All right, any further, any additional? Okay. Okay, City Council initiated items, comments, and updates? Starting with Ryan.
Oh, catch me off guard, I was collecting my thoughts. Totally caught me off guard. One is, I just wanted to say, I had the opportunity to go to the swimming, the recreation center, was in the pool on Sunday, Nicole and I were, we're local businesses using the pool for scuba diving classes, and so it was the first time I actually was physically in the pool and had the opportunity to expect it underwater for a prolonged period of time. And so I think it's an interesting place. I think at some point, when our fiscal situation looks better, we need to look at putting some money aside to make some improvements there, but for what it is and where we're at, you know, it's available to the community, and I know people are doing it, so appreciated that. As far as the League of California Cities Conference goes, a lot of very interesting topics, three days of conference Zoom meetings, it's pretty brutal for anybody, but, you know, a few of the interesting things that came up, you know, one specific presentation or session had to deal with community branding and leveraging some of the natural assets within the community. I thought that was interesting on how some cities actually have taken to championing some of their parks and some of their trail systems and things like that, to be able to leverage that, both for its community attractiveness, but also to invite more opportunity for people to come enjoy them in different ways. So that was a pretty creative presentation. The other thing is, there was one on social media, for all the council that is active on social media, you know, all I'm going to tell you is, don't delete a comment from anybody, and you'll be fine. That's pretty much the key takeaway from that, no matter how bad or how ugly or how, whatever it is, any person could want to say, generally speaking, as long as you don't delete the comment, you know, you protect anyone's First Amendment right to say whatever they want. And so that was an interesting session, talked about some case law founded from some electeds in various parts of the community, and also spent some time talking about the president and some of his Twitter activity and a case, which was Knight versus Trump, that kind of talks about some of these foundational things that are being discussed and decided. So that was interesting. One thing, I know there was a comment earlier about the devices in front of us, these are city devices, and I wanted to clarify that. The city council and city did purchase devices sometime for members of the council, so every member has an iPad issued to them to be able to do and have their city business. So in my case, I generally have my entire packet sent to my iPad. But other than that, I look forward at some point in the future in having the discussion regarding the study session earlier. You know, I know members of the community, sounds like some for and some opposed, and a lot of different feelings about it. I hope folks do take the time, especially as the board member from Johnstone Station talked about, take the time, read the packets, call the council members or the staff, ask questions, and find out for yourself what's going on. So with that, I'll go ahead and thank everyone, have a great weekend, great week.
Eric?
I just want to touch on the National Night Out last week, that, week before last? It was a three-week break in between meetings, so it threw me all off, but it is not what we're all used to for National Night Out. It was about the best we could do, and I was very pleased with the turnout for it being a drive-through National Night Out. We still had our static displays from all of our public safety partners, LA County Fire, CHPU is there, and obviously LASD San Dimas. So thank you for everybody that was there, everybody that showed up, there's a lot of familiar faces there, and it was just good to see kids out and about and enjoying National Night Out. And that's it.
John?
I ran into Noah Chen, our librarian, outside before the meeting, and so she wanted me to give the library update, which, as you recall, she used to come here and do herself, so let me tell you what's going on at the library. She was really wanted to get the word out. You know, the library closed with the pandemic, and then they opened, they're not, the buildings aren't open yet, but they're open for what they call their sidewalk service, starting in July. And they've got a slight change in hours because they want to make sure that people who work can still avail themselves of this sidewalk service. I'll tell you those hours in a second, so anybody who wants to get a pen and paper or... or write it on their computer. But according to Nora, they have circulated more than 20,000 items from the sidewalk service. So people are calling ahead and saying, can I have this book or this, whatever, and they come by and get it. And they answer more than 100 calls a day at the library there. They've got a lot of digital, 400% increase in their digital presence or digital use. So those hours now, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday are still the same. The change is in Tuesday. So all those weekdays are 10 a.m. to 5 p.m., but the Tuesday hours are 12 noon to 7 p.m., just a little bit later so that people who are coming home from work or for whatever reason can get by at that time. The other things we wanted to mention, so that was Tuesday, 12 to 7 p.m. is the new hours for Tuesday. You probably know there's a vote-by-mail drop box over there by the library, so it's, I believe it's bolted to the ground. It weighs about 1,000 pounds, so nobody's going to carry it off. It's supposed to be pretty secure, so you could drop your ballots there. And then what else here? And that's open, of course, 24 hours a day. You can always drop off your ballots. They have got virtual storytime on Facebook, and I guess that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at 11 a.m. They're also still promoting their bookmark contest, which they have done in the past, and you just visit their website to find out more about that. Their website is lacountylibrary.org, and you can do that. And that's about it on the library. So thank you, Nora, for that. Two other things. I'm just thinking out loud here, and I'm not, I don't know what we should do about it, but I'm just remembering at some time in the past on the city council meetings, we didn't have as strict a time limit on our public coming and speaking, and so I don't know if we want to talk about that at the retreat, if we want to make any changes to that. And of course, it is at the mayor's discretion, but just to get some input from people. I know when I was mayor pro temp at one point, and I think this is what prompted some time limits. There was one gentleman who was at the podium in the last oral communication, and he probably spoke for 45 minutes, so it's probably good to have some kind of limit. Dennis might remember that. He was just up there for a long, long time, and so there's probably some good limit, but you know, sometimes it takes more than three or five minutes for a person to get their message across, and I just want to bring that up for a discussion. I'm not advocating one thing or another, but just to see what everybody thinks. And lastly, thanks to my colleagues. Everybody is wearing masks in the closed session, and the closed sessions are taking place in this room, so I'm appreciative of that, and I think that's a good thing to wear the mask to protect each other in that way. And with that, that's about it.
Thank you, John. I have a few things to say, and then I'll go at the end. Oh, Dennis, hi.
I also had an opportunity to attend National Night Out. I think staff did an excellent job considering all the limitations, and I think it went very well. I also want to talk about Senate Bill 50, the Weiner bill that was almost passed, but it didn't pass in the state assembly and the state senate. And so the new bill is SB 1120, which is hoping to do the same things that Bill 50 did, and that is, for the public that doesn't know, it relaxes rules governing single-family residences and almost destroys the idea of a single-family resident. And there's a lot of pressure on the COG, Council of Governments, not to oppose it. I took the position that this city council opposes it, and I spoke very strongly that we should oppose 1120, and I will continue that position unless I'm directed otherwise by this council. But there's been a lot of pressure on the COG from legislators, especially Assemblywoman Rubio, not to oppose it, and I'm taking the opposite position that we should oppose it. And as I said, I will continue that position unless I'm directed otherwise. That's it.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis, and I, for one, hope you continue to oppose it. And if you need anything further from this council, let us know. We'll agendize it and get it done.
Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, just a few things. First, Brad, I'd like you to make sure that you, to remind you, you called Mr. Enderley about his message tonight. I don't think anybody here knew exactly, you know, exactly what he was saying because it was so broken up. Things got better in the evening a little bit when people were calling, but I have to be honest with you, I didn't believe they got much better. So it's one of the things I'm hoping that staff continues to work on trying to get it things where everybody understands and, you know, is, you know.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll call him in the morning. The problem is, is a lot of it's cell reception calling in. As you saw, some call in were perfectly clear, some were not. They're utilizing not landlines but cell phone lines, and that's been the concern. So I will call Mr. Enderley.
So let's take the path that prior to, or the end, the beginning of the city council meeting, we asked them in oral communications to call in on a landline if possible.
Okay. So if you have. There's also the problem where they have a really hard time hearing the discussion here if they're on the phone like that. They can handle it with a computer or TV well enough because it's going straight out of the mics into the system, but I don't know what the answer to that is. I know that earlier, John and I, and you were in the room too, and as well as Eric, were brainstorming, like maybe having meetings outside or how that would work and how you would hook everything up and have a big diagram on the board in the other room, which I know that John had a lot of comments on and how we can, what the challenges might be. But just in general, we need to make these meetings, if we're doing them this way, where people can hear all the time. And so just like you're trying to say thank you to people when their time is up or Brad is, they're not hearing that. I mean, it's just, it's coming over the PA somehow getting into theirs, into the phone. I mean, I leave it to our IT professionals to figure out how to do that, but it's really hard for them to understand what we're saying when they're on the phone.
Superb. Understanding that, earlier today, I asked the city manager to make some direct contact with the county to discuss their plan to eventually open up, you know, meetings, to have public attendance, you know, even with social distancing or something like that that, you know, maybe talk about building a cubicle around a speaker and move the speaker back there. Something to do something, the microphone, to get us a better relationship with the community as far as contacting, contacting. So he's working on that. We do not know what the county's going to tell us, but it's totally in their ballpark. The county helped. So if you'll take care of making sure, Mr. Enderley, okay? You know, tonight I was able to sign a couple of little thank yous for a guy named Larry Giannoni and Dennis Barnes. They're two CERT members that were contacted when the fires came along. And quite honestly, they were asked to help out in Monrovia with the call-in centers that they were having out there, and both of these guys did a fabulous job representing San Dimas. They were asked for some help. As everyone knows, that we had a very functional type CERT system, and unfortunately, COVID came and other issues came along, and I'm hoping that we can re-put that together because these guys proved that it's necessary. So I've reappointed, or I've appointed Ryan Vienna to assist me on the Public Safety Commission, and maybe there can be some discussions like that with the people involved in the CERT program because we need to actually get it going again. You know, National Night Out, staff did a heck of a job. I appreciate that. But they didn't do it alone, okay? There were a lot of community members involved in it. They had meetings. They were ongoing. Okay, they, I know that Gary Enderley from the HEROES program was very much involved in it, and subsequently, I think that, yes, it was different, but I'm sure that the people that came out actually said, hey, thanks. You know, they did a lot of things. Chick-fil-A did some things, and there were a lot of gifts from the staff, put together some bags for each people in the cars. They did a fabulous job, but I just want to make sure everybody understands, not only did San Dimas staff do a good job, but the San Dimas community, the HEROES program and all of that. We are very fortunate that they took an active role in this, and so that means that we're going to have one heck of a Halloween extravaganza, whatever you want to call it, because I believe those same people are involved in the same thing. So thank you, Mayor. So a year ago, we started talking about something called strange lights at the community park. I think if you have an opportunity to drive by the community park, you're going to see the new light standards have been put out there. I understand that within a week or so, they're going to be actually functional, and that's going to give us an opportunity to have lighting there. They're adding some trees, but most importantly, they're adding a sidewalk all the way around so people will be able to walk. Our seniors won't trip out of their cars when they get out. I think this is all getting very positive to give us a center of our community with a place to go for music in the park and any other things going. But I want to thank Sherry Garber and the parks people for the job they're doing over there because, I mean, it's a real enhancement. And I also want to thank Alien and Ron Kranzer and the other folks who pushed it, and they pushed it, and they pushed it, and they pushed it. But you know what? We got the message. We're getting it done, and I want to thank you guys to do it. Thank you, you know, the Kranzers. All right, I want to take one moment of, just to read a little document that I've put I would like to be able to say it, just say it, but the reality is, I want to read it because I want to make sure everyone understands and I don't miss something. So I put it, "I want the community to know that I appreciate individuals contacting me with their concerns, whether they are related to projects, programs, or concerns about other council members. I appreciate them all. But as you know, each of us here have been elected to serve the community and have the right to provide our thoughts, comments, and/or opinions. Both as elected officials and citizens, each of us have the First Amendment right to freedom of speech, and I have no ability to control that speech. Again, I appreciate the direct communications with all the constituents and hope this clarifies some of the questions that I have been asked recently, either via telephone conversation or emails. Each individual on the city council has a First Amendment right, and, you know, I have to respect that, and I think we all need to respect it, just as any other member of this community has a right to say what they want to say." All right, thank you. Okay, tonight, we're going to be in a closed session. We have a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, public employee appointments, conference with labor negotiators. Okay, Jeff, you have anything you want to add?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
No move.
Okay, we'll be back in this room in eight minutes. Okay.